Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Rutland Town Select Board meeting for April 23rd, day after birthday, right, 2024. And we have a full complement of select board members Kurt Hathaway, Joe Gennardo, Mary Ashcroft, Matt Getty, and Sharon Russell. So please all rise and join me for the pledge, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
To America. To the people who stand one nation, American together. The visible, whatever it may be, in justice for all.
Thank you, folks. So we'll go through our first few things before we turn to some of the folks who are visiting. Approval of the select board minutes for our meeting of April 9th, which was our regular select board meeting. And we were all here.
Enter group.
Second, motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes as printed.
One clarification.
Yep.
Uh, page three, under Dave's report for the, um,
Yep.
Contract. I don't think it's that amount of money, was it? 488, was it that much? I don't, I don't have the other, but I didn't think the payment was that much.
That was Pike's, um, total for the contract was the 488.
Oh.
Or whatever that number was.
Okay, that's Pike's number. That's not the one we took because the Fuller's was quite a bit less.
Yes.
Okay.
We need to just get their correct amount in there.
Yeah, I have that. It was like 90.
Something.
I can get that.
Yeah, it's just for the minutes, Dave.
Why don't we, why don't we hold on the minutes till next meeting and get that correction now?
Yep.
Okay.
There you go.
Board member announcements, do we have any? No, looks like a group of no's. Just a couple of quick reminders, Greenup Day, and I'm sure our road commissioner is going to talk about that, but Greenup Day is coming up. And are there bags available at the transfer station and maybe town clerk's office? Yes, at the town clerk's office?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and at the transfer station, too?
They are at the transfer station.
Grab your bags and speak up for the road that you want to clean up. I've got dibs on Creek Road, thank you very much. Next circle article, the deadline is due May 15th, and that will be the last edition. It'll come out just about June 1st. That will be our last edition before the summer. So if you have summer events you want to talk about, for example, townwide celebration, they should go into the circle editor before May 15th. There are free trees, two each for Rutland Town. Well, first come, first served, but you can get up to two free trees from the Vermont Community Forestry.org. They're going fast, but if you go online, Vermont VT Community Forestry.org and look under, I think it's canopy, community canopy, um, there are some pretty nice trees available. Pickup will be later in May. And then townwide celebration is getting ready to hold a meeting and you're going to start working, or you have been working, but you're going to be working some more on our townwide celebration. So that's all I had. All right. Questions from the floor, public comments, people who are not otherwise on the agenda. Mr. Vinslet.
Yes, good evening.
Hi, how are you?
I'm great, thank you very much for hosting me here.
Sure. Would you tell us who you are and what you would like?
So again, my name's Aaron Vinslet. I'm one of the owners for the new car wash that's going up at the Ground Round site. And we hope, hope to be open sometime in June at this point. That's where the schedule is. I'm doing some due diligence right now. One of the things that we were asked to do is to jet the line, the sewer line, from our location down to the pump station. And we have contracted A1 Sewer and Drain Service to do that work and also to continue with cleaning of our pits and stuff on an ongoing basis as well. So there's a, a written document that the two restaurants that were using that pump station, because of the grease that came from those restaurants, that this was something that was jetted out on a, a regular basis. And the purpose of my appearance today is to see if that, um, need going forward could be abolished because I'm putting down warm soapy water versus grease from like restaurants. And we have a, a quite significant reclaim and grease traps on our facility right now since we recycle our water. And so that's what I wanted to bring up. And it was a question that our financing arm wanted to have me present in front of you as well.
Okay, so we have in front of us a copy of the memorandum of agreement regarding sewer maintenance. Did you provide us with anything in writing or explain some of the things you just did verbally in writing?
I did not, no, I haven't.
So your property is on the Ponderosa.
Originally Ponderosa, that then turned into the Ground Round, correct.
Yeah, okay. And what's, is Denny's still in operation?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, so if, if you would do this, I think it might help us understand it a little better. If you could give us something in writing that explains why you, why you feel you shouldn't have to, you know, jet the line, or I think you're doing that part right now.
Yeah, that part's being done actually this coming Monday.
Okay.
Just to, to, because I don't know what the, um, what it looks like right now. And we would just like to have it cleaned anyways from our end. But, um, you know, if Denny's and I was, I thought it might have been a restaurant that was in the old mall up above, too. But I just didn't want to be responsible or company to be responsible for Denny's going forward to clean whatever they have going on because, you know, we're not going to be putting down grease like what they're doing.
Okay.
Actually.
Okay, so we'd have to be in touch with Denny's as well. So if you could give us something in writing and give us, you know, the explanation that you've given us and get it to us, we'll be able to take this up at our next select board meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for being in touch with us.
No problem.
Any questions from select board members that Matt had something?
So it's, it appears just in skimming, this was an agreement between three parties. So if Ponderosa or it's car wash is to be released, we may need a new agreement with Denny's at the same time.
Yeah.
I wonder if we should send the issue to our favorite workforce committee.
Highway Water Sewer Committee.
I think we covered, I think we reenamed them the Public Utilities or something.
Public Works?
Public Works.
Whatever you want. Yeah, that'd be, okay.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think we'll have any trouble with Denny's because that's the only other one on it now, right?
I think so, yeah.
It's a branch, so there's a junction. And Denny's come from one side and they come from the other. They're completely separate.
Right, so once there's, once these guys is done.
Right.
The other one will need to continue.
Yeah, probably.
Days in comes into that. Yeah, I mean, right now it says they're going to split the costs of certain things and so.
So Mr. Vinslet, are you catching this conversation here?
Yep, I am.
Okay, so the sooner you get the letter to us, we'll get it to our Public Works Committee, and then they're going to drill down a little bit, not literally, but they will, they will figure out who needs to be contacted and what a new agreement needs to look like if you're to, if your business needs to not be subject to it. So the sooner the better then, and that'll give our time, our committee time to meet and make a recommendation to the full board.
Because I think the second part of that decision is, does Denny's then need to pay the full cost or are we splitting that cost for Denny's?
Well, they would have to pay for the cost between their restaurant and that junction. And I think that's what they were required to pay before, so they won't, shouldn't be paying anything different than they did.
Well, we're, right now it says they're paying 50% of the cost.
Right, and I think that would be because, if I remember when this has been discussed, they would go down and do both of them together.
Yeah.
Now there's only going to be one done, so the cost will be less. So Denny's is going to be required to maintain the, the portion from their restaurant to that manhole.
The 50% cost was a specific section. There is, there's another part here on the back where they pay all costs associated. So there, there are different sections of that line. You have different responsibilities for that one.
Right, so you're going to have to deal with each one of these itemized things to determine whether they need to change because.
And see, number seven on the back says, Ponderosa and Denny's will each pay their respective share directly to the cleaning contractor. So.
Number three requires a split.
And do they on a regular basis get that cleaned and so they don't even?
That I don't know.
Okay.
Do they submit it?
No. Okay, so, because line eight says they're going to copy the town administrator on their transmittal of payment to the cleaning contractor. So if we see nothing, then we would gather it's not being done.
Right.
We will gladly accept that.
Okay, so if we, that sounds also like we should ask Mr. Vinslet to make sure that we get a copy of the report from A1.
For this event.
For this particular upcoming event.
Yep.
So that we know it's been done.
Yes, I'll make sure that happens.
Anything else from any of the select board folks? Okay, so hopefully we'll see you next meeting.
I do have one comment that I would like to ask of everybody. The first weekend that we're going to be opened on our grand opening, well, we'll do a soft opening first, but then we're going to do a grand opening. I would like maybe some suggestions from people. So for the first three days, we will be donating the washes to everybody that comes and uses us, but we'll be taking donations for a local cause. And if, I would like to have maybe some suggestions from you guys on, you know, something that held dear to your eyes, hearts, that you think would be a good place for this money to go.
Huh. Is that to, when's your opening going to be? Do we have a couple of weeks to think?
Yeah, sometime in June. So I did the same thing. We just opened up a couple of weeks ago. This coming Friday, we'll be doing a grand opening in Shelburne. And Shelburne suggested this project that's happening at Shelburne Farms. And so our, our, our intake is going to be going to that particular project.
Okay. All right, so we'll think of it and we'll touch base with you next meeting, okay?
That'd be great. And when is the next meeting, by the way? Is this a monthly?
Uh, two weeks.
Two weeks.
Seven.
7th of May.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We'll talk to you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Okay. Doing, ah, Mr. Anthony is on. So let's, with the boards, okay, let's go down to action item. A, the board to meet with Joe Anthony to discuss Diamond Run Mall property. So good evening, Mr. Anthony. How are you?
Good evening, how are you today? Very good, thank you.
Okay. Um, so thank you for checking in with us. We, we were, we've been remiss in the past about not checking in with you more frequently, so we thought we would, you know, be back in touch. We do have our chief of police here.
Glad to hear, glad to hear I missed, so that's always good, so.
Okay, we do have our police chief here. We do want to talk about ongoing security concerns and up around the mall, and especially if there's an update on, say, any information about what may have been happening lately. And then generally, you know, what, what are prospects for redeveloping that property? And of course, we just did a, or the Rutland Regional Commission, Planning Commission did a survey about possible areas in town that could be used for housing, and your property came to the top of the list in Rutland Town. So we wanted to explore that a little bit with you and see what you might have been thinking along those lines. So the floor is yours.
Yes, so our project is full steam ahead, and again, I'm going to have to apologize because I can't tell you who kind of our retail anchor is. We've met every week for at least two months. And we, we're meeting on Thursday again. I am bound by a confidentiality agreement. However, I do, you know, they plan on getting final approvals internally on their real estate committee in August, and it's pretty well vetted. So I imagine that at some point they're going to come and certainly reach out, you know, reach out to a plethora of folks locally. But, you know, so I anticipate you finding out sooner than later, you know, who, who the star tenant is. We are engaging, they already have a engineer, they're using colliers, we're, we're in the process of interviewing, and we put RFPs out for, for engineering companies. We haven't selected one yet, but I anticipate probably the next week or so, uh, the next week or so, I, you know, we should have a, our engineer selected. We did just, we're working on our own housing reports, so thank you for that. And, you know, I know there's been a ton of reports done on housing, both by you all and, and I think the city did one, and, and again, there's just a plethora of, of reports at this point, but the one we're having done is kind of, is the only way to get agency financing in this country. You need to have a special report done. Agency financing is of course HUD, Fannie, Freddie, and the, um, the government agencies in the US that backstop large commercial, especially residential and multifamily projects like that. So we fully anticipate, um, having residential on the site. As everybody knows, we have 80 acres, enough land for, for both retail and residential. But again, we, we, we agree, you know, our site is perfect for, for residential. We plan on building some, hopefully, I'm going to knock on wood when I say plan on because lots of things could happen between now and then, including interest rates, you know, are difficult on, on multifamily and residential especially. But we're full steam ahead and, and pretty excited about being able to come back in the next couple of months. No one wants to disclose more than me because again, I know, I feel like I've, you know, you've heard this before, as you, as you reminded me last, last meeting I joined. So again, I wish I could tell you more, but at this point, that's, that's, you know, all I'm at liberty to tell as it relates to kind of the specific tenants. But I do know, you know, significant driver, household name retailer, all, all of the retailers that we're talking to now are kind of certainly household with names, and some of them aren't in Rutland. Heck, some of them aren't even in the state of Vermont yet. So, so, so we're certainly, you know, the, all in all, you know, tenants, you know, I think tenants, the project has been well received by tenants. So again, I wish I could tell you a lot more, but at this point, um, um, you know, I think that's really all I can give you as it relates to specific tenants. But we, you know, a little bit of what we talked about last, you know, we will have a residential component, certainly a hotel component, so.
So let me switch to our chief of police for an update on security up there and any concerns and where are we? And then I'll have Mr. Anthony so that he's aware of what's going on, too.
Have you fixed the back doors on the, on the place since the car, they're using cars to ram in the side of the building?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm sorry, say that again?
Okay, he's coming up to the mic.
Have you fixed the back doors where they'd use a vehicle to smash into the mall?
Is that a question or again, did you? Yeah, yeah, yes, yes. That was fixed.
I've been up there for.
Yeah, yeah, that was fixed, I think, the day that, that, the day that it happened, yes, but somebody did break our doors once again. I think we knew it, I think Bill also sent over an email to Mike. Yeah, I don't know if Mike, I'm going to have Mike start joining us. I don't know if he's on this call, I think Sydney is, Mike on, Sydney on? I think my assistant was on. But anyways, as you know, I have a local, Mike Sternberg, lives in Vermont and, and kind of does the day to day as it relates to, to that property. So I think next time certainly we can have him on, who can discuss more details about kind of when it happened, why it happened, and, and what we did with Valor to fix it.
Hey Joe, I am on and I'll make sure Mike's on the phone, on the next calls.
Okay.
And do you have a security company that responds to calls so that our local police doesn't have to?
Yeah, we have, we have a contract with Valor Security. They, they circle the property and, and are responsible to, to, to respond to calls.
I haven't heard of Valor Security.
Is it Valor, I think, hold on. They're, they're local, they're the ones we've used since the beginning. Censor, I'm sorry, not Valor, censor.
Okay.
Yeah, it's censor.
But was the, the door incident was reported to you by, first by them or by our constable?
Uh, again, if the constable reported, it wasn't to me, again, it would have been to Mike, so I don't know the answer to that. I don't know the answer to that. I know I saw some emails back and forth whenever Mike gets a email of substance. Him and, he had sent an email to Bill saying, here, we just fixed it, you know, but again, I don't know if the constable was involved. I have no idea. I could certainly, I'll ask Mike, and you know what, I'll, I'll, I'll get an update for the next call from Mike, um, and just kind of give you something in writing, here's the incident, here's what we've done, right? Again, that was the, the first one that was brought to my attention in a few weeks, maybe longer.
Chief, anything else?
I have nothing more.
Okay. Questions from select board members? There's a no and a no, and Sharon?
No, I just would like to see something done instead of just hearing about it.
Yep.
Every time we meet.
Okay, Matt, anything further? Okay, so.
Mary, I have a question.
Chris, Clark, our fire chief, yes, please?
Yeah, we were up there the other night doing some training and there's a, a giant sinkhole in the parking lot, kind of to the west a little bit of Kmart, before somebody fell, and there is a caution tape around it, but before somebody drives in it, is it, you know, something that can just, you know, put a load of dirt in or gravel or something just so no one falls in there and gets killed?
Yeah, I, again, I, uh, yes, and yes. And it's in progress. So again, I know we taped it off and did some investigation on, as to the cause, so I'll have, I'll have that squared away here within the next couple of days, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Anybody else? Okay, so, um, thank you again, Mr. Anthony. We'll look for something in writing on these, a couple of issues here and probably, hopefully by our next meeting, that would be good. We meet in two weeks. And we'll check in again with you as we approach the August date, which sounds like something may be happening then. Something happens before then, please do let us know. Of course, we'll, there's a, a whole Act 250 process, an amendment process that will probably have to be undertaken, so the town is a party in that. And we'll, we're trying to keep ourselves informed so that we can respond quickly and appropriately.
100%, and, and I'm hopeful, like I said, to be able to disclose a lot more very, very soon.
Okay, we're looking forward to it.
Likewise, thank you.
Thank you.
Ciao.
So are there any other members of the public who are joining us who are not otherwise on the agenda but want to be heard? And I'm not seeing any other. So let's move on to our regular agenda. Carrie Clark, town clerk and treasurer. Good evening. Okay, so you have a liquor license in front of you that needs to be approved. My apologies to you and to the East, is it East Asian Restaurant? Okay, it says East Restaurant. So it was apparently in my folder last meeting and I missed it. So their liquor license expires April 30th, and they are requesting a renewal. So this is, and I'm looking at Chief Dumas, East Asian Restaurant up at the old mall, any issues with it? No issues, and they're requesting a first class restaurant and bar license. Is there any motion? Shall move. Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor of issuing the liquor license, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's unanimous. I'm going to circulate this. Then the only other thing that I have is to remind everyone, actually, probably to inform people too, because some people don't know that there is an election next week for the revote on the school budget. Ballots were sent out to all active voters. You should have received yours by now. We've received several back already. There's been warnings in the newspaper for it. The polling places will be open as usual. The polling place for the west is here, and then for the east is at the school. Feel free to vote in person, but if you choose to do so, you must remember that you need to bring your ballot with you that was sent to you. If you forget, or if you've already put it in the trash, which I know some people have according to our paper, they must come and sign an affidavit in order to vote. So that is my reminder to everyone. Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Questions for our town clerk or treasurer? No? Okay, thank you very much, Carrie.
Thanks, Carrie.
All right, is Mike Delahanty on? No, okay. Ed Dumas, town police chief.
Been a month or so since I've been here.
Yeah.
So I just handed this to here today, just to give you some numbers on the homeless situation in Rutland County. If I could correlate them with our increase in crime, if you wanted to. I understand that we're going to wait on the next, we'll do this once, once a month on the, our calls for service and our total number of calls at the south end of town. So I don't have any of that information today.
So this looks like some of the information that we.
I think something that you got on the email, too.
Uh, former.
Mayor.
Former mayor, Chris Loris.
Yes, I see that.
Yeah. Was working with a group that was crunching the numbers on homelessness and homeless housing in the state. And interesting, I mean, just generally, that, um, yeah, well, it's. yeah, well, it's in bold print on the first page, relatively small increase in persons experiencing homeless in Chittenden County. Um was due to a very tight market for hotel rooms, which required people to relocate to shelter in other counties, resulting in a very large increase in Rutland County. So we ended up with, well, you you can see the charts, they tell the number as well. So, okay, any um questions for our chief or anything else you've got for us? Is that a no?
I haven't, I don't really have anything.
Okay.
I did reach out to the uh person in charge of the person overseeing the group and as far as assisting the folks at the Cortino with their animal issues, but uh I guess he's been ordered to stand back a little bit and let other to other people.
Okay.
They had they have something planned for, I think, later in May to have some sort of uh benefit benefit to help the folks down there and their animals. I haven't heard anything else since I spoke to Kareem Chapman, he he's part of that, so I haven't talked to him lately, so.
And did you have an appearance on a television?
Oh, yes, how could I forget? Uh WCX contacted me yesterday, wanted to talk to me in reference to our uh nine our two one one signs that we want to put up down at the uh Plaza. For whatever reason, and he wanted to talk to, he also wanted, today he spoke about uh the officer position at the first advocacy uh child center there for the uh C-TAC position.
Okay.
The S I U officer. Yeah, so uh I don't know, maybe it's on tonight, I don't know. I I guess we will see what twist they put on what I had to say. It was on camera, so we'll see.
Good.
Well, it's better that it's on camera, so that.
I don't know, I've I've been burned before, so I'm a little skeptical, that's all I can say.
Do we have something on C-FAC in our file?
I think.
Okay, it's in our packet, it is. Okay, it's item B. This is, we had requested, the the police committee had um spoken some about this with our police department. And we wanted to see a little bit more what the S um the MOU would look like. So and we're we were generally in favor of it if it looked like this was basically a wash to the department. It would add, if we're able to find somebody to fill the position, it would add a um police officer in an investigative capacity to our department, but the time would pretty much all be used for C-FAC except for an occasional overtime patrol. And the um training for this officer would be paid, especially for investigating crimes against children, would be paid for by um C-FAC and not by us, so it's sounded like a good proposal, Matt, this is the this is what we've got, um how are we feeling about it?
Uh I thought this looked good, the only question I had, which I had gave to Ted was about training, and we got that answered that they would they uh C-FAC covers training for this position through a different stream of grant funds, so it would not, again, it wouldn't come out of our budget, so um the the only other thing on on this, I think we needed, we had discussed with Ted last time, was getting a rough budget of or maybe we discussed in committee, um just a budget of how we would provide for this position with this amount of money.
Okay, so do we have to get the rough budget? No, probably not. Okay, so it sounds like this should probably go to back to the police committee. We'll we'll get the rough budget, Matt and I will take a look at it with you folks and then make a final recommendation, hopefully in time for our select board meeting, May seventh. Does that suit folks?
Yeah.
Okay, to police committee. Hey, thank you, Matt, thank you, Ed, anything else or questions from our?
Do you like this idea?
I do. The the biggest thing is this, they need an agency to sponsor the person, right? Have to be a law enforcement officer, therefore they have to have to have an agency do it.
And and I think I talked about this, you weren't here last meeting, but we get this person, if they wanna work another twenty hours a week or whatever, they're ours. They're 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 committed forty hours a week to C-FAC, which we understood, but any extra they wanna do, which I'm sure you can use the help, would be great.
Right.
We have funds to.
Plenty going on down at the uh south end of town.
This is just another person that would help lighten the load for the south end, so other than the particulars, I think. Go for it.
Right. So that'll go to police committee and hopefully back on your desk by the seventh.
Okay. Thanks, Ed.
Thanks, Ed.
One quick thing, Ed, I got your signs, your two one one signs, whenever you're ready, let us know, we'll punch them in the ground.
Okay, I'll I gotta check with the uh owners of the Green Mountain Plaza, just get permission, I've kind of been busy at something else, but I will try to get that done this week.
Yeah, whenever, got the sign, so let me know.
Okay, good. All right, John Paul Fagnant, town health officer, public safety building clerk and second constable.
Hi, good evening.
Hi JP.
So um the public safety buildings go along on schedule, the floors have been poured in the police department of the building and they'll be pouring the floors in the rest of the building uh shortly. So that's going along according to schedule, no unexpected issues have come up. Um as far as the health officer job, I put together kind of a tweak of the state housing code that they just passed, and it would be my suggestion that you send it up to Kevin, he he would be more familiar with the statute to empower the town to adopt this ordinance. Uh I tweaked that a little bit where uh the the town should have been referenced instead of the state, but it's the state law that was passed. I think too, in in two weeks too, I'd like to bring you a list of codes that you can consider, the health orders, whether you want to adopt them, the life safety code, uh all these codes have been adopted by state of the but it will give you that flexibility that you had expressed wanting in terms of addressing things locally if you feel the need.
Okay, JP, your your reception on this end is not very good, we've got most of what you've said. You're recommending that this draft go to Kevin. Um and you're gonna be bringing in some other safety codes for us to consider. And the floor is poured in the public safety building, got it so far?
Police portion.
The police portion, okay.
Yeah, that's that's good. The the last I noticed the request for a long rifle for my patrol duties. Um that's a layer to the board indicating the need for and and.
No, okay, JP, we we can't, we can't get it more, sorry.
You're breaking up JP, we can't understand, I'm not sure what the issue is.
Yeah. Okay, good. He's gonna call in on.
Yeah, they um he stopped, I um did some repair work and we so Ed, the party was talking about the public safety building, the um floors for the police station portion, the port. Uh the building is segmented into, when I was going over this, when you know, when I was kind of filling in for JP, there's like seventeen pores in the building, the way they've got that design set up in it, so this is I don't understand the concept, but anyway, they had to in like the where the police station is, the floor is four inches deep and it's different. And there's so many things that have to go under there first, and then when they do the apparatus space, they're much thicker. And the apparatus base are radiant heat, so they put that down, they have to do all of that, but they're working, they're working from the back of the building to the front. Um they did pour the pad for the generator, um I believe that's supposed to be delivered at the end of the week, so.
Okay.
And there were a couple of little things, I think we talked about in the last meeting, relocating some stuff to give us the opportunity to maybe increase some parking there, but they're still working on some details.
Okay. Any sign of him yet? Okay, well, we're gonna.
Find a paper with a number.
I thought you said he's gotta find a payphone.
No, yeah, no, you gotta find that phone number, because if you don't have that, you you know, I have done this several times.
Yes.
Yeah, so I think he was referring to like the Boca codes and stuff, though there's some other things that we can adopt, like and then then we're gonna, so the state does its stuff and the state does all the inspections, but I think if the town does some of this stuff, then we can start doing some of it.
That's what it sounded like, we could do our own enforcement.
I don't know if you had a chance to look at this.
Not really.
This this is basically what the states um says, this is this is what their uh health officer statutes and stuff are, and and so we would adopt their codes as ours, which then empowers him to do what the state says he can't do under there, but but if it's our ordinance, then we can do it.
All right.
And I think that's what we wanted.
All right, um so we'll hold on that and move on to Barbara Noyes-Pulling, town planning commission. Good evening, Barbara.
Good evening. Uh the uh planning commission, the town.
There you go, can you hear me?
We'll let JP go.
Hello?
Okay. One more time, we're gonna try JP.
Is this better?
That is, yes.
Okay, great. So I heard, I could hear in the background, let me shut this computer off, I could hear in the background Joey filling in on the pores and and things, it's uh it is a very interesting process to watch as they work through it. Uh the only other item that I had for the board's consideration was uh purchasing a long rifle for my duty. Uh Ted Washburn, Deputy Washburn has a long gun that's registered in the department now, but he paid for that rifle with his own funds. I have uh some extra funds in my equipment this year because you had authorized the purchase of the vest with the money from the south end, and I was looking for your approval, it really all it would be would be transferring the rifle from deputy chief Washburn to myself, it would stay in the department. But because he purchased the rifle with his personal funds and not department monies, we would reimburse him for the rifle.
Okay, well, it looks like the police committee's gotta meet in shortly anyway to go over some other business, so can we toss that over to the police committee?
Sure, if you'd like, that's fine.
Okay, all right, so let's um add that to the agenda for the police committee and um but we'll get some more details on, you know, how much and that sort of thing.
Right.
Okay, all right. Any questions for our public safety building clerk, town health officer or second constable? All in the same person? It doesn't look it, okay, thank you JP, appreciate it.
All right, thanks, have a have a good night.
You too. All right, uh now Barbara, thank you.
Now, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, good evening. Um the the town planning commission went through the housing survey that was sent out a few months ago um by the regional planning commission. So I just wanted to go through some of the findings and some of the comments from the town planning commission after reviewing that. Uh there were seventy seven total responses, sixty five from town residents. So that's only about one point seven percent of the population. Um as you mentioned, Mary, um with Mr. Anthony, the most popular site for new housing is was the Diamond Run Mall in that survey, it was mentioned by uh forty one percent of town responses. And I'm not sure, listening to Mr. Anthony, if he's thinking of of housing beyond hotels, he mentioned hotels. Or a hotel tonight, I'm not sure if he's thinking of apartments there. Um so also from the survey, um um people were asked what type of housing they supported. And there was a mixture uh running from detached, single family homes, townhouses, duplexes, courtyard um structures and buildings and fourplexes in that order. So the planning commission questioned whether this, there was enough data here, uh especially regarding uh where the housing should go. Um after the Diamond Run Mall, it fell off, um uh any site after that got us no more than four um positive responses. Uh the planning commission acknowledged that rents are going up, home sale prices are increasing and mortgage rates are going up in the town. Um and um some of the issues that they see out there, um the the a regional planner who did the survey um noticed that there were a lot of two and three bedroom homes with just one or two people in them. So he was wondering if there is more capacity that could be utilized with those existing homes with um rental units placed in them. And the commission talked about lax laws for evicting renters and um that it's easier to rent uh through a short term rental. And the commission thinks um that still to be addressed, what the survey did not address is whether there's a need for affordable housing, not homeless housing, um there's a system of services for that. Um they're wondering whether one big project with tens of apartments will fill the need. Um they would like more input and what residents will support for housing, um more input on what property is available. And um they would like a complete inventory of housing, housing types and market values. And maybe a definition, maybe have people define what new housing means. So we we talked about doing an assessment and um there is a possibility of getting an assessment that that answers those questions through um the municipal planning grants. Um these kinds of assessments um are considered a priority project right now, so the application um would be competitive. So, yeah, they were essentially, it's it's come back down to the questions, what is the gap between supply and demand? And they thought more study was needed.
Is this our planning commission's conclusion or was it the regional planning commission's conclusion?
It was a town planning commission.
Okay, can the regional commission answer any of those questions?
Uh we've asked them, um I can forward what the the planner Logan Solomon um did uh reply to already, and um yeah, I can forward these other questions to him as well.
Yeah. Cause if if we have questions like that, it's entirely possible other municipalities will too, and maybe the regional commission could pull the information together more.
I mean, he came back with the idea for the the municipal planning grant. Um and uh he came back with a couple other ideas that maybe a village near the town hall there would support more housing and maybe amending the subdivision ordinance to encourage cluster development or housing choices um that are aligned with the town plan, that's what he's come up with so far. And yeah, the town commission heard those comments and um decided that perhaps an assessment would be the way to go.
Okay. Um I do remember that, oh, several years back, the study of the corridor here between Center Rutland and West Rutland. One of the suggested uses was indeed just that, it was housing for um singles, actually, it was Um, new, young professionals coming into the area and um, elders who didn't want a big place. But just enough room for themselves. So um, you know, that kind of falls in line with what we heard about a few years back too.
Yeah.
Um, any other questions from select board members? Okay.
The, the municipal planning.
Thank you.
Um, the municipal planning grant, if I could just, um, um, I forgot to mention that it um, they're usually due in the fall. So there is some time.
Okay. Yep. Keep us posted on that and let us know what you need. So.
Okay, okay.
Alright, thank you Barbara.
Thank you.
Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director. Good evening.
Well, let me start off with, I just got off the mall for the first time, so that was my happy day.
Was it a long day?
No, there's not that much, but the front is mowed and it looks fantastic, in my personal opinion. Um, we did a lot this past week. Uh, big shout out to Highway for helping. We wood chipped a lot of the. Fallen branches that had fallen within the park. Um, we tried to get as much of those, so we spent. One of those days in the morning doing that. Um, and for their help with uh, putting on the hurricane blower on the back of the tractor, we went over to Dewey, drove over to Dewey. Before it downpoured and got rid of all those leaves. Um, and then the same thing within the park. So I spent a good day blowing leaves back into the woods. Um, lot, the water's on at all the parks. Um, the cover is off the pool. It is wrapped up and put away for the summer. Um, and the pool is gonna start to get cleaned and then the next week or so. So that's always a plus sign.
Jamie wondered why it was green. I told her it was, has not yet been cleaned.
Yes, it has not yet been cleaned. Um. Let's see what else. Baseball schedule is out and Bill will have it on the website if it isn't already. Uh, the games start next week for majors and minors start the week after that. So please head over to Dewey Field, check out a game, support our young. Little baseball players. I put up signs, the signs up at Dewey, the one that got ripped down by vandals last year, so I re kinda concreted that one, made it a little bit tougher. Hopefully they won't knock it down, but you never know. Um, and then we re-put the sign up at uh, Northwood. At the entrance, we put a new pole in to make it straight. If you've ever gone in and the sign was off to the side and you kinda turned your head, decided to read it. Now you look at it straight on, so we got that taken care of. Um. One big thing, I did seed and roll the fields as well uh, down back, trying to get the grass to come back. And then the big thing is, is that on the eleventh of May, last year, we had a dog day at the park with Nate from K nine culture and we are. He's, he's kicking it up on steroids. So we're talking about a five K run and a whole bunch of other cool stuff on that day within the park. Um, our park already is mapped out for a five K run because the high school cross-country team uses Northwood Park for their meats. So that's a pretty simple one to map out, but that's happening on May eleventh. If you wanna come up with your dog, there'll be more info to follow. And once I get some flyers, it'll be on our website. So it was a big hit last year. Rooster was there last year. As well as I think one of the city dogs and they put on a little demonstration. So that was really cool. And then they had the rolling rooster up there if you wanted to buy some, some chicken.
The other rooster.
Um, so other than that, lots going on, you know, obviously spring is popping and so everyone's. Out and starting to enjoy the park and I noticed quite a few people last week.
I went for my first walk on the loop.
Still muddy, I'm assuming a little bit?
Wasn't bad at all.
Okay.
No, it was okay. Um, I did have some questions about the. Um, the bicycle mountain bike trails. You got, do you have signs coming?
That will start, that's on my list to do. The summer is to map it and sign it and I'm kinda waiting for. We're gonna put some big signs, but once the shared use path is up, I don't wanna. We'll make a couple of trailhead signs with what goes on in the park. So people know. And then, yes, the trails will be marked. That's. That will be taken care of.
And the shared use path, we went, I know it's, it's uh, got crush rock on parts of it.
Yep.
And, but I couldn't tell where it went out through.
It's going to snake back. Dave and the boys are working on that when they have their, their downtime. So it's eventually, it's kinda like a big snake because it's ADA.
Mm-hmm.
So it'll come out by, I don't remember the, the people's name, the yard that we have already. So it snakes back and forth. Um, and then it will come out on Shazana.
And I know we have some commitments to those folks too about.
Trees or fencing or something.
I think, yeah, so.
That's all.
Well, that needs to be included.
So once Dave's slowly chipping away at that, but yes, you can see that they've made some progress.
They have.
Um, and it'll look great once that is done. So kudos to Dave and the boys for that.
Good.
Other than that, oh, the other thing, um, I'm replacing our AED. At the pool. Um, it's probably ten years old now, so we're getting the same one. As um, that's here in the building. And in talking with Bill, there's a statewide, he hasn't got back to me, but he's still waiting to hear from them. But. In our conversation that we had, we really should think about using some. My personal opinion is using some capital funds to get one in the highway garage, the transfer station and every building we own. And we don't have, like right now, the only one that has it is here.
Right.
In the pool, seasonally. No other building has an AED in it.
They're not in the fire station, but. I thought trucks.
They're in the trucks.
Okay, so they're there, but.
But, yeah, right. However. There's not one at the transfer station. There's not one at the highway garage. Those are some points that it wouldn't hurt to have nowadays with everything that goes on. Um, especially when we can get a, a statewide pricing, hopefully. We're waiting to hear back. So I thought I would plant that in your ear that if we bought like four or five, rather than one here, one there. So I told them I was gonna do that.
Okay.
Um, appreciate it. Just to keep you on the radar, it just makes sense.
Yeah.
Having them the same wouldn't be bad either.
Having them all the same, correct, would make.
Kind of a nice feature.
Very good sense.
What's the lifetime of one of those anyway?
You keep changing the pads and the batteries, but they, they do go for a while. You have, like, I've gone through easily four sets. If not more batteries since I've had it. And those are like. Their money and then the pads, the pads, yeah, the pads are only good for a year or two and then you have to buy the new pads.
Yeah.
Whether you use them or not. So there is an expense that comes with it because you can't use outdated stuff.
Right.
But as long as the manufacturer is still manufacturing the product, you're okay.
So who stays on top of this one? Okay. And we're all, okay, good. So you know what the maintenance, annual maintenance cost to would be. Okay.
Yeah. The pads, but if, if we can get, like, and get a response, then that would, that would help. But there's the vendor. The, the company that we, of, of ours is, is the only one with actually a state contract. So.
Okay.
That's Andy, but I gotta hear back from them.
Great, good. Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Good.
I think that's all I have, so.
So this isn't just for Mike, but we've discussed this Northwood property thing.
Oh, yes. Have we, there's a certain person who was.
Did we dump that on your lap?
Yeah.
I think we did, yeah.
Yeah, we did. I mean, it was, you know, kind of payback for what I dump on highway committee. So it seemed fair. Um, I don't.
Well, I just, you know.
In my defense, we've been working on the personnel manual.
Yeah, well, that would drive me, I would think you wanna do some sane work.
But this, I know, this would probably be a good time for me to dive into.
Anyway, just, you know, because I still like that.
Yep.
I don't wanna forget it.
I agree. I, I wasn't gonna push because I think I did two weeks, two meetings ago, so I just was.
I might have missed it.
You guys are taking turns.
You know.
Alright, I've made a note to myself, so. Thank you.
At some point, we need to get together to have a meeting because of the townwide celebration and a few other things.
When are you meeting for your, so, Mary, you just said you're having a meeting for the celebration, right?
I'm not the chair, so I think Sharon's the chair and Kurt's on the committee, so what these folks set up.
Get on and meet with me, then meet with me.
I'll try and make it and if you can try and make it, that'd be great.
Oh, I gladly, yeah, just let me know. Let me know it works. Try to get.
Will you let me know what works?
Well, usually after three is good. Or if you wanna go six thirty in the morning, I'm good there too. Or six. It's already, it's five AM, I'm already at school at six thirty. So you wanna go six o'clock.
No, I walk at six, thank you.
We can do five, four thirty.
I can get up at four thirty. I'm not opposed to it, won't be the first, won't be the last, so. You bring the food, I'm okay.
Give me a call, take a look at your schedule and then we'll schedule a meeting and I'll let.
Yes, I will do that.
Are you gonna be a pain in my?
Aren't I always?
Yes.
Moving right along. Any other questions for Mike Rowe? Okay, thanks very much.
Thanks, guys.
And it is looking very nice up around the north.
Getting there.
Yeah, yes. We did notice you took down the, the dead tree that was over the trail. We kinda liked going underneath it, but it was gone, so.
Well, we took that out a while ago.
Yeah.
When they were running.
Yep.
We, yeah. I thought we have a tree guy on staff now. Chris wants to look at it. So, no, that just, that's a huge, I'm not, that's beyond my pay grade.
Yep.
Pay somebody to come in, I'd rather pay him the overtime is a whole lot cheaper than. Paying a company to come in and take that stuff down. That's just a, a bonus, then he can do that.
Good, yeah. Works out well. Thanks. Dave Sears, Town Road Commissioner.
I am here and just as a. Just as a kind of a backup to the AED thing, it's probably just a matter of time before these guys give me a heart attack, so it's probably gonna, could probably use.
Do you want them to have training too, or should I just?
Nah, I don't.
Go ahead.
Just zap me, that's fine. I've been tasered before. I volunteered for that, so this can't be much different.
Have you ever read, have you ever looked at the AED? The instructions are right there, so that. Anyone in this room can go take that out and make that work.
Yeah.
That, that's the.
It talks to you in the.
In everything, yes.
It does. They're pretty fancy.
Should go through a training session, you know, even if it only took ten minutes, it'd be worth doing.
No, it's longer than that.
Okay.
You just gotta show up in the fire department as your CPI refresher.
Okay.
Well, so I asked. We're asking what we're doing ours soon and we're just doing our refresher right in full class.
Oh, okay. Alright.
You can get refreshed.
Yeah.
But, but they're, they're designed for the average person to take that out of that container and make that work.
Just gotta do the full training for us. We'll get to you eventually, just.
Well, the CPI portion.
Lay there and relax.
But, but the idea of the.
Was he just probably throw it on.
Anyway.
Alright.
Okay, so.
He comes still up. Um, so we did some, just uh. Uh, basic homegrown highway department pass. We did some mailbox repairs. We filled some potholes. Uh, we brought, we got the mower down from Mendon, the, the big mower and uh, went all through that, changed oils and sharpened them, put a new set of blades on it. And uh, got that thing all ready to rock and roll. Um, I don't have a part-timer to run it this year. Um, Walt has a lot, a lot of stuff on his plate and he just. Didn't feel like he'd have time uh, to totally commit to it, so. Um, I'm either looking for a part-timer or one of my guys is gonna have to do it, so. Um, I'll make it work either way. Uh. Like Mike said, we spent some, quite a bit of time at the, you know, doing different things at the pool and around the park. Um, we. I, I cleared the culvert out at Post Road by GMP. Um, we had a little bit of a beaver standoff. And this one was, this one was tricky because they got clever and they actually pushed the. Damming up material about four feet down inside the culvert. So. By coincidence, um, we had one committed beaver side on Route seven. And another one committed beaver side on Post Road. So we eliminated two. I'm sure there's more, but as of now, that culvert's clear and, and flowing. Um. The Class Two paving bid or paving grant was submitted. Uh, so we'll wait to hear back from the state on that. Uh, just as a um, reminder that the uh, tree sale is happening Saturday at our place. Uh, and actually, uh. She still has quite a bit of inventory left. If anybody's looking for any trees, bushes, uh, berry bushes, shrubs, anything like that. Um. Nancy has uh, quite a bit of material left or uh, inventory left over. Uh, as Mary mentioned earlier, uh, green up day is May fourth. Um, you can get bags at the transfer station or um, the treasurer's office. At the transfer station, there's a sign. Um, and I'm just asking that anybody that does green up, if they could just call. Uh, eight oh two, seven, seven, three, eight, one, two, eight, and just leave me a message where they leave the bags. It'll save us doing a search and destroy mission. Be a lot easier if we could just go out and pick them up, rather than have to travel every street in town trying to find them. Um, I've, I've got a limited uh, amount of space on my answering machine. So you could also leave a, an email at the town website for us and we'll get that. We can get out and get those bags all picked up. And. Beginning this week, we uh. I hate to say this with the weather prediction, the next couple of days, but we started stripping all of our trucks of our snow fighting equipment. And hopefully that doesn't backfire on me.
This one's not on me, okay?
My stuff's washed, put away, it's not coming back out.
It's on you.
Good thing is, is it'll melt faster this time of year.
Yeah, it will. Yeah.
Yep, and where we are. So um, the only other thing that I believe is on the list is the F three fifty bids. For the truck that we're selling and I spoke to Bill and I don't believe this is a favorable thing.
So we didn't receive any bids, correct?
Right.
Alright, alright. So what's the, so we toss it back to the highway committee and say, figure out what to do with this?
We publicize that.
Think we gotta put it out again. Put it out again and I, I can't believe nobody bid on it.
What if, I mean, there was a minimum, so I don't know if that was the issue.
What'd we put for a minimum? Thirteen, we have to move the mini, minimum down then.
Okay.
An awful goodbye for thirteen, but.
I went online, I, I, I did a bunch of research and I did NADA and a whole bunch of stuff and. Uh, low book was thirteen, high book was eighteen. So, you know, I mean, it's, it's got, it needs some love. It does need some love. So I went with the thirteen number. Uh, that's, that's where I came up with that, but.
Like, yeah, we might have to try to sell the truck and sell the plow and sander separate maybe and try to get the most money out of it. Let the plow and the truck go together and sell the sander separate.
Yeah.
Sanders are your role, when you're in youth and the sander's fairly good shape, but.
Yeah.
Or put it, I mean, it's not costing us anything other than being there. We could just put it out and. Take the minimum off and see what happens.
Yeah.
We don't have to accept the bids.
We know we throw it away, huh?
Yep.
Quit.
Alright.
That okay with you, Dave?
Yeah, that, that's fine. That's, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll just put it out without minimum, see what happens. See what happens. I mean, that, that truck and standard and setup and it's well maintained, you know. If it was diesel, maybe it would sell better than Joey would be interested, but. So if it's diesel, I would definitely would have went, somebody would have.
I guess we, so go ahead and try.
Yeah, we'll just rebid it and just take the minimum off and let's see where it goes. And if we, you know, if somebody only bids a few thousand for it. Then we'll have to make that decision at the time.
Okay, alright. Sounds like a plan. And he's holding up, oh, it's this.
Oh, yeah.
This is the uh, request to replace or to reimburse for a mailbox replacement. Um, this is from Charles Bizarro, uh, one thirty-five Annette Terrace. And he sent it in, oh, number of, number of things and including attached is the. Town's mailbox policy and two photos. So um, Joe and Kurt is our highway committee. Have you had a chance to look at this and. Make a recommendation for us?
Yeah, we have a mailbox damage policy and. Fortunately, they went and put up the new mailbox before we could get to replace it, so. There's no way for the town to reimburse them for that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the policy says, the, the policy says that, um, you know, if. If I go out and say that we can't fix it or we can't get to it in a timely manner or whatever, um, that was. After that second storm we had when we had uh, uh. That big storm we had and uh, that was me. I got the mailbox and. They called that. And they called that, it was a Saturday storm. We, they called on Sunday, which we weren't there. Came back in on Monday and we had a bunch of, um, different issues with high snow banks and, um, you know, like Mill Village, people couldn't see coming off of East Pittsburgh Road. Because of the snow banks, we had to go down and push banks back there. And we had a bunch of little fires to put out. Uh, we got there on Tuesday to put the mailbox back up and it was already up. And they sent a bill saying that they paid somebody forty dollars or forty-five dollars to put it up. Um, I mean, we were there on Tuesday. We would have put it back up on Tuesday. We would have installed a new mailbox if that's what it needed. Um, and like, I didn't authorize it. There's no invoice. It's just, you, you owe us forty dollars. And that's that starts a tidal wave. You can't stop if we do that.
My recommendation is we stick to the policy.
Yeah. With respect to this?
With respect to that and, and in the future. I mean, we, we have the policy, which is, you know, these guys, you can't expect the mailbox to be fixed within twenty-four hours of it being damaged during a major snowstorm. It, it's just not going to happen, you know? The, there's a whole lot of priorities way above that. And it's unfortunate this does happen. Um, but we clearly state that the mailboxes are the, the recent damages result of contact with the plow and or some other portion of the truck. We replace them. If it's the snow coming off, then no. And obviously Dave was prepared to go take care of this. And I think they did it in a timely fashion. It's just, you know?
So is that a motion to deny the claim from Mr. Bizarro?
If that's what I need, then yes, it is.
Second.
Questions made and seconded to deny the claim. Any further discussion?
We, we are nice enough as a town to replace mailboxes. And there are a lot of towns that do not. And I know when I was plowing in Menden this winter, Menden doesn't replace mailboxes. And I probably got twenty-five or thirty myself. They must have some weak mailboxes or something. Cause man, I wasn't actually hitting them, but boy, were they leaving. But, you know, we're nice enough in Rutland Town to replace them.
You might want to take yours down before you get the mail in response.
I, I got the, I got the retired road commissioner's mailbox.
Okay, so that's a motion made, seconded and a confession.
Question.
Yeah.
For Dave or Joe or Bill or whoever would know, if Dave has received the annotated version of this letter.
Uh, I don't know if he's, if he got that or not.
Um, you know, I just think he should receive that as the feedback and respond appropriately.
Yeah.
To, cause you know, as a matter of constituent service, but, um, otherwise, I agree, Tuesday seems like a very prompt response. Some of the policy.
Yeah.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of denying the claim, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous and the claim is denied.
What did we need a meeting for?
Uh.
Was it the, um, something we talked about the beginning of this?
And, and we got to have with Stephanie about, um, uh, JP Sidewalkers.
Yeah, so
Okay.
We were talking about.
And I got a whole list of other stuff to go with that.
Um, so does May third work?
She, she sent out an email saying, she said, she said a date. Yeah, it was May third. It was Friday, the third.
Third at nine?
Yeah.
Okay, is that gonna work for you, Dave?
Yeah, that's fine. I, I didn't see that email, but yeah, that's fine with me.
Yeah, yeah. Cause she was trying to nail down, she had three dates. I think it was like the first, second or third, and she wanted us on one of those. And so I, I responded and said I could do the third.
Yeah, I just responded to her yesterday. I hadn't checked my email in a minute.
Um, so we're looking, so that should be in timely enough fashion. We can discuss the sewer. Um, Billy, we had talked about the, um, getting, um, AOT involved with the Green Mountain Plaza and that intersection.
They, they, the last I had followed from them, they're, they're trying to coordinate all the different subject matter experts that would be involved.
Okay, so, so ask them if they can put those people together by May third, please.
Yeah.
And they could join our meeting because if not, I mean, well, if they do, they do. If they don't, but we might as well. Cause it is going to be getting in, you know, the grass might grow and I might have to go hands.
We might need a bigger meeting room before, to try to compile all those people for the trans.
Yeah. Well, they can, they can join us.
Fifty-three and a half of them.
The electronics.
Is, uh, Dave Sears finished with his report?
Yeah.
Maybe.
Dave?
Nope, nope.
I, I am, I am, if you'll do away with me.
Okay.
Okay. Anything further from the select board for our road commissioner?
Think positive, Dave.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Yeah.
You too. Uh, let's see. Marcia Choffey, are you on? And I don't see you. Uh, Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Hi, uh, just one little thing. I've been getting a call from, uh, lady at the Cortina concerning fire alarms and such. Um, I did have the state go down there. They did find a couple detectors missing throughout the hallways. Uh, they gave them a week to get them back up. He said it was not as much of a big deal as the lady was making. But they have a week to get them up. He just went yesterday. So I think he's going back next Monday to make sure everything's back to normal. Other than that, I don't have anything for you.
Yeah. And thank you much for mentioning the sinkhole up at the mall. I, I don't think he knew that much about it. Yeah.
It's, it's actually, it's pretty big. Um, so.
I would be more concerned about what's causing it than the fact that there, there's, it usually indicates water moving.
Yep.
There's, I'm sure there's a broken water main when they, you know, they dug up, not there, but they tug up. Cause there's only two fire hydrants still active up there. They put valves in the ground for the rest of them. Um, not over there though, I don't think, but I didn't go look down the hall. I just saw the size of the caution tape around it.
Chris, is that, I haven't been up there in a while. Is that kind of on the, be like the northwest portion of that building?
Uh, it's, we're, we're using the fire hydrant in front of Kamar and it's just west, I don't know. Not even a thousand feet away from, uh, the main entrance to Kamar.
Yeah. So you know, the, the way that building, the building is laid out. And if I remember right, um, on the northwest portion of that building is where the main comes up. And there's like one shut off there that was down. It used to be down like ten or twelve or thirteen feet. It was really deep.
Yep.
And that's like the main shut off where the, where the loop starts. So I'm wondering if, it's not in that area, is it?
Um, I don't think so. It's, it's more in the, it's in the middle of the parking lot, but over.
Okay. So that would be where I think JCPenney's used to be on that corner. You know where I'm talking?
I do. It's, it's not quite that far.
Somewhere in there. Somewhere in there is where the main comes from the city main and it comes up somewhere in there. And that's where the loop is. And that's where the main shut off is. So this must be something else going on up there.
Up over the bank on the, uh, south side of the car wash, where the car wash is now, where Pon, so it comes up over that bank up there. And you're right, it comes in right about the point of JCPenney. Uh,
Yep.
Kind of somewhere in there. Uh, but they've had problems up there for years and years and years with sinkholes around catch basins. So I don't know if they used a ton of stone when they, they laid all that. And then as the water gets in there, it just kind of washes the dirt away. They've, they've had problems there forever around basins. Uh,
All right, well.
They had a couple holes out behind it. Or you could lose a car in.
Yeah, this one's gonna be like
They should, they should go up and put barriers around it rather than fill it. That's what I would recommend to them or if you want to talk to them. They should put Jersey barriers around it.
They're, they're investigating it. So the, the, so Mike Delhany and I both emailed them the weekend before the last board meeting. So they, they were aware. So that's why, that's where the caution tape came as a result of. And he said, Daldens is investigating it to find out what's going on.
Okay.
All right. Well, they're on it. That's good. All right. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Anything else for Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief? Oh, okay. Thank you. Bill Sweet, Town Administrator. I get to say that now. Almost said, you'll work.
Yeah, still got a little bit of a pile, but we're gonna, we're, we'll make this go quick, Mary. See what else we can do.
That's all right.
All right. Uh, a few things on your desk. Uh, so we have, um, just after the packet went out, I received from Petco, uh, their sewer allocation application. Uh, they are requesting an increase of four hundred gallons. Uh, they sent along the check. This would give them, this brings them up to what, and actually a little beyond what they're using. Uh, so it's ready to go.
Okay. And we have the, um, capacity?
Oh, yes.
All right. So we, is there any motion on the sewer allocation, uh, increase application for Petco?
We'll approve. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve?
I'm a little bit confused about the application here. So you're saying, Bill, did you say it's a four hundred dec gallon increase from what they are?
Yes. There's a, so they are at sixteen hundred right now roughly. Uh, so this is gonna bring them, uh, up to two thousand gallons a day.
Okay.
The last couple of years they were over and they just, they just brought their allocation up to meet their usage, but they keep going over. So they decided to apply for a little more room to, don't have to keep repeating the process. So.
So, all right. I see. Ultimately they get to a total. Yes.
All right, got it.
Okay. So any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. I don't think we signed this.
Nope, just, that's all you need to do.
All right, it's in the
Uh, let's see. Also on the desk, uh, we have an updated contract request from Foley Services. Um, Mary, you have the amount there. It's like thirty, I think it's like thirty-eight dollars.
And seventy-two cents every two weeks.
So they come and they bring the heavy carpets for the ramp and in the clerk's office and they come and they change them and we're very happy with that. So to accept.
Motion's been made to accept the fully contract and seconded by Sharon. Discussion.
I'm not even sure there was a place for you to sign that.
I think.
Just to
Perhaps add to the motion that the chair has authorized to sign.
So.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No, motion carries unanimously.
Uh, Green Up Day, there is an event on our Facebook page to call that out. Uh, does also give people locations to pick up bags and to call the Highway Garage or email them with locations of where they are or to be picked up. Uh, so that's been taken care of. Also, uh, this Saturday at the transfer station is the Household Hazardous Waste Disposal Day.
Oh, that has to.
That is, that is Saturday. So, um, this is one of two in the, that, that are sponsored by SWAC in the county every year. So.
They take fluorescent light bulbs?
No. But, but most stores will for free. You can bring, bring them.
Yeah, wish they're always.
It is preferred to bring paint and those kinds of things to the stores rather than to the transfer station because we pay for that disposal. So stores will take them because they have to. We take them because we have to. We pay for them to get rid of them.
So they'd be taking computer batteries. At this point, are they gonna say go to grease?
Rechargeable batteries. We can recycle free at all the time.
Like, uh,
Laptop battery?
Laptop battery.
Yeah. Those, those takes them all the time for free. Those, those are no problem. Uh, you can bring those to like Interstate Batteries. They'll take them for free. Uh, Home Depot takes them for free. Yep. Yep. But this, this is more geared toward like, if you have like old, old chemicals, things like that, then that's, that's good.
Stuff that you don't know what else.
Yeah, paint, paint you can bring to stores. Like they'll take those for free. Like Home Depot will recycle it for free.
If you, when you go buy paint, if you look, there's a charge on it. Everything you buy for recycling.
Oh.
You're paying for that because that's
Yep.
Part of trying to get people from dumping it down the drains.
Yep.
Um, latex paint, they tell you to just let it dry and harden up and throw it away. But it's oil based paints and stuff you can bring back.
Uh, the signs for the Green Mountain Plaza, uh, the, the person I'm talking to is on vacation. He just came back today. And he emailed me as I was talking to another person from the plaza. They are absolutely in favor of this. They just want to get on the same page. They want to talk to Dave and make sure they don't need insurance to have Dave put them up, like just very, very, some, we're down to some details. And then we're, we're in good shape, but they are, uh, happy about it. And we're working on, uh, we're gonna work on a, the exact location for them to go, whether we want to put two or three there. But, um, yes, we've got, uh, we're, we're making progress. We've signed to there. Uh, they, they're happy with the way they look and, and all that. So, uh, the state AH, Agency Human Services has said, yes, they will attend a board meeting and they are also gathering their group of people to bring with them, uh, whether it's in person or not. I don't, there's, there was four or five of them as well. So they said absolutely. And they, they're, they're, they the person who replied to me copied all the other people. So they're, they're, so I will keep on them to, uh, to get that. Uh, I did, reached out to Drew, who was on vacation. He got back to me, uh, just a couple of days ago. He would prefer to come May twenty-first. I asked him if he could come earlier and he didn't answer. So, uh, at this point, Drew is planning for May twenty-first for the board meeting.
That's progress. All right.
It is progress.
Say no.
Didn't say no. Uh, Friday at noon.
And you'll check with the AHA's.
I will, I will keep up with them. Yeah.
Okay, good.
Maybe we can.
Get them all in the same room, same time, then they can't say, gee, we didn't know about this.
Good.
Ooh, boy. That'll be here.
Right, Friday at noon is the deadline for the scholarships.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, there's like five or six so far. So that's pretty good. But we usually get two or three in the last, last couple of days. So.
Had like twenty of them last year in total.
So, uh, but they, they are due, um, and still, so, 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 got, got plenty of room in the mailbox. So we can, we can make more. Uh, the, uh, one, the weekly schedule I send out every Monday.
Bill, can you just, sorry, can you post something on the scholarship thing and we can reshare it on Facebook?
I, I reshared the scholarship announcement yesterday.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, to remind people to get them in. Yes. Uh, so, um, I, I, I talked about it. And no, that's like, hey, like this just, just gotta put an application in.
If they don't apply, it'll make our work easier, but.
Yeah, right. Um, so the, 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 the email I send out every Monday that has like our meetings planned and, and comedians. I don't, it's not difficult, but is, I want to make sure it's useful. Cause there's certain, there's, and I have been putting on the agenda topics. And when I, when I, can I also include the date they were added? And some of the dates are getting to be a little long. But is, I want to make sure this is useful or if there's something else that would work better or
Just remember to do this? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, I, I do it every, I do it every Monday.
I, I peruse through it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I do.
Every, every Monday morning, you get, you get, I, I, you get, get an email, usually if it's Monday, Monday afternoon opening. But, uh, if, if it's useful, it's fine. I don't, I don't mind doing it. But if there's something maybe better, I don't, you know, I thought about maybe like emailing the individual committee members, like individual topics, but that's, that's, gets to be a, a lot of, a lot. But um, if this is working and, and it's still useful, then I certainly will continue to, uh, to send it out. But.
I think what Bill is saying is when are we gonna get some of this stuff done and off?
Pretty much.
Indirectly.
Some of this with Dave's.
Yeah, some of this stuff we personnel has on there. Review the personnel policy. So
What? You want to go ahead and tell us?
That was old, I didn't have a date on it. Um, but, uh, the, the, you know, it's just, and if there's anything that we're like, hey, we're not, we're, we're this is, this is an old topic now. We can take that sort of link them off. But you know, I just tried to, uh, make sure that we are keeping up with that, with that. So.
Here.
Um, yeah, okay.
Good.
Uh, let's see. The, that's everything that should have been on the desk and the only other things were things from the packet which are two items. Um, one is uh, A in your packet is from the Days Inn. They were uh, they and Petco were the last two sewer allocation, uh, overages that needed to be addressed. And, um, the owner was very, very nice, came in and talked to me. Uh, they were, they were substantially over in their, in their usage for the, uh, for the year. And I think he put a letter here. Yeah. So they were, um, I think they were forty-five hundred gallons a day over.
Something like that.
Uh, oh, they're ninety-eight hundred is what they're allowed. And they were at fourteen thousand a day. Uh, so that's like at five bucks a gallon. So like a twenty-five thousand dollar fee. Uh, it turns out he had a water leak, which, and he gave me copy. So, so in here you have a letter from him. You have copies of the city water bills, which actually show like the use of going way up and then way down. Uh, pictures of the water leak and it being repaired. Uh, and then the, uh, in there also is in our ordinance, there is a waiver provision that allows you to In our ordinance, there is a waiver provision that allows you to waive. The provisions of the article and one of the reasons is because of leaks. So if you would like to give him this year as a, cool, we'll check it again next year. Um, I, he was.
What is he asking for? A return of any money paid?
All he's asking for is basically we don't ask him to increase his allocation this year.
To match the leak.
Right.
So he had a leak after the water meter.
Obviously, the leak.
Caught him and carries.
Yeah, no, I, I knew he had a leak. I wasn't sure what he was asking us to do.
Every time he's come in, he has been so nice about everything. So.
This just makes me think that. People that are paying for water like they do, when you all of a sudden have an abnormal bill.
Yep.
Dells and whistles and lights and skyrocket should be going off.
And it did.
And it, but it took him, seems like it took him a little while to catch it.
Well, he is working, uh, he did say he is appealing to the city to waive some of that bill.
Yeah, they're not going to be understanding at all.
No.
Um.
He said it was, took a while to get a contractor in because it was around the.
Yeah, right. It was around the flood. Yeah. So he, 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 it sounded like he did about as much as he could. Uh, sort of digging it up himself and trying to patch it. So, um. So we have done waivers in the past for leaks. So.
I would move that we waived any penalties or any additional because of that.
It looks like they went right back to the normal.
Yeah, and it, it, it does show that. So.
So going, going forward, we're not going to impose any penalty and we're not going to require that they. Request an increase in allocation because.
Just monitor it.
For twenty twenty-three, yeah. And then.
Next year.
So I saw head nodding. Is that a second to the motion?
I think, oh.
I'll be a third though.
Matt did.
Oh, Matt did. Okay. Motion's made and seconded.
All third.
Okay. All right. Four. Okay. Any, um, discussion? If not, all in favor of basically waiving, um, penalties and a demand for an increase. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, motions unanimously.
Okay, that was, that was, thank you. I appreciate that and you will too. Uh, the last thing is, uh, after much. Back and forth and back and forth with Vermont, the Vermont EV charging grant, I finally got a reply. And it was not exactly what I was, we'll say hoping for. Uh, so we submitted a project cost. Of eighty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and eight cents. Uh, they're offering us thirty thousand, four hundred dollars, to which I was dismayed. I'm like, this was supposed to be ninety percent. To ninety-five percent match. And, and they're like, well, we have limits on the individual parts of the projects. And I'm like, that was never.
No.
In the information originally.
Yeah.
Very frustrating. So. Our project was broken out into two segments. One was the infrastructure upgrade. And one was the charging stations. The infrastructure upgrade is thirty-eight thousand dollars. The total project was eighty-six thousand dollars. They are offering us thirty thousand dollars toward the cost of installing the charging stations. So our. Our portion would be fifty-two thousand dollars. We have already said to Rob Stubbs that we're gonna do the upgrade. Regardless of this. So we've already committed to the thirty-eight thousand. Uh, thirty, of that fifty-two is already committed. The question becomes, do we want to spend the other fourteen and do that part of the project? Or say, no, thank you and maybe try later.
No, thank you.
Yeah.
So the, the total budget was eighty-six, right?
That was for everything.
So we got about forty-eight thousand. For the charging, right? Fifty, thirty-eight thousand for the upgrade and then forty-eight for the other.
Uh, sixty, uh, sixty, yeah. Uh, thirty-eight, it was like thirty, thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, thirty-eight would be eighty, yeah, eighty-six.
Yeah, yeah.
So we would have to come up with, because we aren't going, well.
We've already committed to thirty-eight thousand. We're already committed to thirty-eight thousand. We were hoping to get, we were hoping to get twenty thousand from this to offset that. So.
We did not. And we did not.
Not happy with their response.
Yeah. And there is no arguing with it.
There is, there is no appeal process. No.
Tell them they're not getting their charging station.
There will be no.
That's, that's, that's ultimately what it comes down to is.
Station at the Rutland Town offices unless they honor the grants as presented. That's what I write them back.
Well, it's, it's frustrating because I, I. Yeah. For, for about eight weeks, I was answering the same two questions over and over again. And.
I think they overs, over. You know, I'm not sure. Yeah.
So.
Yeah. So is there a motion to deny the grant or, or not accept the grant?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Motion seconded and thirded.
We're gonna.
Any discussion? Yeah, we gotta move ahead with.
We, we already have, we've already committed money. We're going. Did that, did that, did the deposit for Stubbs, did that go on the orders? Was that in the order for tonight?
I didn't see them tonight.
Yeah, there was something in there for Stubbs.
For like eighteen thousand?
I didn't know.
I think there was.
Okay, so.
Well, we need to vote unless you've got, this is relevant.
That's, that's, I just want to make sure that was, that was, we was gonna talk about. So yes.
Okay. All right. All in favor of, um, uh, declining the grant for the EV charging station, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries.
There's, uh, it was eleven thousand, six hundred.
Okay, that's it. So that, that's the one we, when, when they said, hey, we need you to come some upfront, because I go order some stuff. Now, the. Uh, generator transfer switch, which was like a six to eight month lead time, came in like two months ago. So it's been sitting there waiting for. This decision. So.
Well, that's fine.
I, I did tell them last week, I said, I've, I've got a decision on this. I will know Wednesday. So pencil us in. That's why I don't, I don't, and I've heard back from them yet. So.
How are we looking for funds in the, um, maintenance for this building for this year?
I haven't seen a budget audit report in a little while, so I don't know. But you might have one in there.
Yeah, I was just wondering where we were. So we, because we're gonna commit to this. Some of that funds we had figured would either come out of the. Capital improvement or we would take it, yeah, go. Because I was hoping that we would be getting the twenty grand and then we were going to. Any up the other twenty and then.
That, all signs pointed toward that's what was going to happen. So I was very disappointed to see this as a result. Uh, and the last thing I have is, uh, um.
Not Robert Clark.
Ed Clark, the other, the other clerk, uh, is, uh, has someone working on, uh, putting together the estimate. For us for the downstairs remodel. So we should be getting that pretty, pretty soon.
Okay.
Uh, but that still is, it's still rolling along. So.
Okay. Good.
Because I think, you know, we, we had planned on, um, doing that probably in increments.
Yes.
Electrical first. We've got some stuff done. And, and the way that downstairs, this, this is a project that can be done that way.
And let's see, I don't know when the applications open for the historic preservation grants that they're usually due in. Mid to late fall. So, once we get what Ed is, you know, Ed's plans, we can go and apply for one of those. And I've done them. Well, I've done those before. So, once I get the Northwood Park situation straightened out. Right.
So, well, once you do the personnel policy, then.
Once, once we have a, you know, kind of an idea what that downstairs is gonna cost. It, it's given the market, given, I think it's gonna be a lot more than.
Yeah.
We think and we're all gonna be like.
I think, I think Ed's a little, a little.
Gun shy.
But he, he did make a, he did make some reference to that. I said, we, we, we're well aware. Don't worry. We still like you. It's okay.
May, maybe not so much as we used to, but.
So we've done the packet.
Yep.
Um, let's see, Personnel Committee, yet again, we have a report of the Personnel Committee from April seventeenth. We have a very, very, very similar report from our meeting earlier today. And I, I think the, we're, how many pages have we taken out so far?
Ten.
Okay. Um, so we're whittling down the draft that we are working on. Um, we had a brief discussion. We. We have used up the money, um, the both installments for, that you authorized us to spend on. Our consultant Teresa Mealy and we thought it would be appropriate because we're, we think we're. Between Matt and I, she's not in on these discussions. It's Matt and I just slugging through. But once we have it. Um, amended the way we think is appropriate, it will go back to her. So we're thinking. If you would be willing, we would look for an additional two thousand dollars to pay her to keep working on this. Once Matt and I have a revised draft for her to look at. Motion's made and seconded. Discussion. If not, all in favor of additional two thousand dollars for our consultant, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Um, board, oh, um, Dave, do you have a report on regional commission?
Well, not a whole lot, but, uh, they are going forward with their plan to move their offices. They're moving from the Opera House to Evelyn Street to the building right behind where they are now. Like you said in the meeting room, you could see what the new place is gonna be. That'll give them about another thousand square feet. It'll give them, um, the whole second floor, uh, their own entrance and parking.
Yeah.
So it's a good move. They're looking, uh, if you go looking for the Regional Planning Commission. This summer, you might want to go around to Evelyn Street. They're looking to move by the beginning of July.
So who's in there now? What building is it?
It, it's. Forget who's on the first floor. They get this, the second floor is vacant now.
Okay.
Second floor is just about ready to be moved into.
Okay.
And Folly is the landlord.
Yeah, okay, for both. All right.
Pretty well.
Oh, that's right. Was it the, the old supervisory union office? I bet it was.
Well, yeah, that sounds familiar.
Okay.
Sounds familiar. Uh, but it, it looks, uh, looks like a fairly decent deal. Uh, the rent goes up, but they get another thousand square feet. And I did the numbers and the other thousand square feet was very cheap.
Good.
And it'll just make the offices better. Other than that, nothing that really affects us is ongoing projects. I think unfortunately Fred Nicholson knew more about it than I did. It's just starting to pick it up, but there's nothing really coming through that. Um, yeah, they're, they're, I think they're working on the regional plant.
Okay.
That's in design stage.
Yeah. And we guess a big housing component.
Yeah, and, and there, there's several projects reviewed, but nothing, no action taken on them at this point. We spoke about housing. Um, there were two affordable housing projects under. In progress permitting wise in Rutland City. Uh, one downtown Rutland, the other one up by sewers on Route seven.
Oh.
Behind there.
Okay.
That, that, that might happen. So it's, um. Other than that, there wasn't a whole lot going on. It was a very quick meeting.
Well, thank you and thanks for joining us. Yeah.
Well, I learned. I'm trying to.
Okay.
Still figuring out what's going on.
Okay. Um, if you want to be put on the, you know, on our regular agenda for reports, we could do that. Or if you just want to stop in when something is going on.
Uh, I'll let you know in the.
Fair enough.
Couple of weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
I want to be put on the, and otherwise I can just stop in and.
Okay.
Something's growing. If I, there isn't, I'll miss the May seventh meeting. I believe I got something else going on.
Okay. You might want to be here for the twenty-first. With the mall. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
No, is that? No. No, it's not. It's, no. Um, but the, um, the following one for. AHS, DCF and the Cortina. So. That could be an interesting one.
I, I, I bristle at the Cortina, at the name.
I know.
I'm really upset about it.
No.
For specific, we have for this. Well, I have a specific reason. Cause I got married at the Cortina.
Oh.
Up on the mountain.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, so, yeah.
We met to a lot of bar association meetings up there.
Yeah, yeah.
Together quite often. Yeah.
We had, we had a nice wedding. Uh, you know, the ceremony was in the garden in the back. And I planned that on purpose because I had snipers in the woods in case any old girlfriend showed up.
Oh, okay. All right, that may not go in the minutes. All right. Okay. Um, so do, thank you on the, um, Personnel Committee report. Um, other things on our project list, uh, city water sewer. Um, contracts, um, Town Hall Monument, I.
Have a meeting.
Oh, there, there is a meeting coming up.
Yep.
There was something.
They, it, it snowed. It was that bad snowstorm when they were supposed to get together before.
Right there.
Okay.
Now it's gone.
Um, Town Hall Building Improvements, we just touched on a little bit. We're making good progress there. Shared Use Path, we're making progress there. Transfer Station Toilet, who knows? Um, Northwood Park Trail System, we, we heard about the bike, um, and the signs coming in for those. The Pocket Park, I'd really like to see something in the next year or so. So. Um, dilapidated buildings. I think Sharon mentioned the one up at the corner of Gleason and. Okay.
You what?
I did ask Mike Delhany about, about that building and he, he hasn't gone back to me yet.
Yeah. Yeah. Um.
I like that idea.
Succession planning is an ongoing process. Route seven north JP's sidewalk, it sounds like.
You're like.
We're.
We got a, we got a meeting scheduled.
Okay.
Next Friday morning.
Rooftop solar arrays. We haven't done anything since you and I were up at the transfer.
Well, we started about doing that. We were gonna put that field out there and then those guys shot us down because they couldn't make any money.
Right.
You know, didn't work good and they suggested that. So.
GMP, yeah.
So we, we had a, uh, in Clarendon, we had a fire call to a rooftop solar array that caught on fire.
Really?
Yeah. It was the wiring underneath ended up getting wet in the connector and ended up, it didn't. Didn't burn up much, but burnt the wiring up and ended up melting the shingles off the house. And, uh. They had a big go around with the solar company on whether the array was gonna get replaced. Or whether they're taking it off the roof and fixing the roof and getting, getting them gone or if they're putting those panels on.
Hmm.
So I would be very leery of rooftop solar arrays.
Okay.
After dealing with that.
Good to know. All right. Uh, new public safety building is under construction and the police department floor port. And Service Road is, yeah.
Oh, that's what it was. Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
I knew it was there. EHP.
Yeah.
Have we heard anything?
Okay. But I'll, 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 I'll.
Yeah, good.
Poke the bear a little bit.
I mean, you know, we put it on hold. So I don't know. I kind of think they're doing this for us because they did the rest and they're trying to. Yeah. Get it in for us, which is good. I, I didn't know how our money spending was going and where we were.
I, I haven't received information nor an invoice recently. So.
Okay. All right.
Cause these are the kind of things, once you, you know.
But the Stratton Road Culver, the North Grove Street project, those things are, are all moving. That, but that's, that's a different firm, but that, those are moving forward.
Right. Yep. So we're, we're good there.
So down under.
Well.
I was just reading off the list.
When he, and it was something, it's something I want to ask.
Well, we have the list.
Why would I look at the list?
Yeah. Um, under action needed, we have done A. We have done B, the sewer allocation. We have done C, liquor license. We have done D. We didn't have any bids to open. E, we don't need an executive session that I know of.
Wow.
Are there, I know you're disappointed. Um, any other items? Have we covered everything?
Take care of that. And this is, um. That's that thing that we did. And this was the minutes that we didn't vote on because it's.
Right number. Sharon, anything else? Matt? Was that a something?
I said, move to adjourn.
Oh, I thought you wanted to move to executive session.
No.
Motion's been made to adjourn. Joey seconded. Non-debatable. All in favor, please say aye.[1786.23]